Call this main order, please stand for the pleasure of leaders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence please for the victims and their families of the Virginia Beach Municipal Complex Shooting. Thank you, please have a seat. If you have a cellphone, please either silence it or shut it off, and if you are wearing a hat, please remove it. Row callers.
Carl Lovich.
Here.
Kramer. You're Frankler.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Ister.
Can everybody please remove their hats? Thank you. Alright, I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 13th and the reports of the Police Department, Treasurer, Engineer, and Code Office. Do I have a second?
Seconding.
Carl Lovich.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Ister.
Is there any audience comment on the agenda items at this time?
Regina Russell. Regarding the chicken in family residence zones, would that include roosters?
We haven't done, we're gonna just mention that we're gonna continue consideration of that measure, and in the draft and information that was provided by Mr. Gittens, it was excluding proing roosters or hens.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other audience comment? Mr. David Clasik? I'll let you open this up.
Yeah, it wasn't on the agenda, but it was supposed to be, it just was a mix-up. Dave's here to talk to us about the RFP for the Albright Center for the 200,000 dollars that were received from Senator Gordon's office about putting that to use.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it tonight. I'm David Clasik. I'm here representing Albright Center of Arts and the Sunbury Revitalization. So before you and your package is a request for pricing for design services. Design services are broken down into about four to five different pricing categories for design service and phasing. So basically, the primary phase that we're focusing on is the implementation to getting the facility open and operational, which includes basically stage design, prop area, and changing area along with ADA restrooms, and HVAC upgrades to the facility. Second on that phase goes into concession and food preparation, to seating design, to some other different things. So basically, here tonight, I'm presenting this for your approval to do a public bid for design services.
Let's just piggyback. That was brought on a little bit differently from the last 200. It was a recommendation to have the bid come in for council. Council authorized the bid, and then the Albright Center would go out for bid, and then the city would receive and be able to be a part of approving the bids. But this is not city money. This is all from that $200,000 grant that was given to the city and to SRI for the Albright Center. So.
We've got the formal motion blocked. We get some quotes for the internal work.
Second.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovich.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
They just had a side over there, guys. Your odd comeback was perfect from the last 200,000, and they just had to go for that before $1,060.07, which was being bidged.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, David.
Alright, Jody?
Yeah.
Oh, we're moving in this, the DCD app.
Okay. Alright, so on May 14th, the mayor, myself, Jolynn, the executive assistant, met with local government policy specialist Ted Ritzick. They're from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Ted Ritzick and Jim Rose, and we were meeting about the city's comprehensive plan that had been adopted by council in 2012. And our purpose is to, in collaboration with the Sunbury Revitalization Incorporated, kind of reboot the plan and begin any work necessary to achieve the goals and objectives laid out in the plan. Mr. Ritzick met with us again on June 6th with some additional representatives, one from the Planning Commission, SRI Director, Senator Gordon's staff, and Representative Culver's staff. And during that meeting, we took a real close look at the plan as it is, what the goals and objectives are, where it might need some updating since it was done in 2012. And one of the things that Mr. Ritzick stressed was the importance of having the participating in the strategic management planning program. This program was formerly known as the Early Intervention Program, and it's important so that we are able to successfully make a financial strategies to successfully implement the comprehensive plan. And so, what I've done is I've invited Mr. Rose here, who represents DCD, and he's accompanied by Mr. Mike Carpenter, to give us an overview of what that plan is and how it would work and how it would help us.
I remember seeing some of you. I've been here a couple of times to talk about this program under its all horrible name. This is a program that we have that will provide municipal governments with a matching grant to allow the governments to hire consultants who will come in and take a look at all the operations of your government. Take a look at all the departments, all of the finances, and it's a program that will provide you with an idea of where you are financially and where you will be five years down the road if you don't make any changes. Additionally, the consultants will provide you with a list of things that they recommend that you do to change your picture, to change the way your government operates, the way the various departments in your government operate, and also change your finances, financial picture. Because I know a bit about Sunbury, because I've been here a few times, because I've talked to the mayor and I've talked to Jody, and Jody's predecessor, normally this program is a 50-50 match. We would be recommending a 70-30 match. In other words, we will pay 70% and the city would pay 30%. So that doesn't mean anything if you don't know how much one of these would cost. The upper limit of what this would cost for municipal government the size of yours would be $75,000. So you'd be looking at the most at 30% of that. Now, the program allows you to hire your own consultants. We will provide, we'll have to reprovide you with the list of firms that we know that do this work, and then you take a look at the ones that you want to send a request for proposals to. And then when they respond, if there's a clear winner, then you can just go ahead and hire the clear winner. If you want to have them come in and you want to interview them, you could do that. I can come and help. Mike, Mr. Carpenter and I can come and help you with that process, and then you choose the people you're gonna work with. This program is not designed just to be one piece. This program is designed to have additional phases. So one of the phases we already know that the city would like would be the strategic planning, or I'm sorry, the comprehensive planning. So that would be in an additional phase. And then anything else that may be discovered, lots of times municipalities may need new software, new hardware, or computer hardware, or they may need assistance with human resources, with setting up job descriptions and personnel policies. Those can all be done in additional phases. We will always keep the same match, so we will always pay 70%, and the city would be responsible for 30%. The 30% would be paid out over three years. It wouldn't have to be paid the first year or the second. It could be paid in the third year. Or if the city has the capacity, you can do some in-kind work if you were able to do that. So say maybe pulling together financial documents or other documents to get them ready for whatever company you decide to choose to work with, and then that can be counted towards your match as well. This program is designed not for, it can be used for municipalities that are having financial problems or that are going down the tubes, but it's not meant only for that. And that's why we've asked the legislature to change the name, and that's why they have changed the name. So the process is really quite simple. We have an easy application that's online, and if you decided that you're going to go forward with this, I would help whoever the person is who's completing the application to do so. And then the process moves fairly quickly. Usually, within six months, you'd have a report from your consultant, and you'd have some idea of where they would be going. Everything is done publicly, so your consultant will meet with you individually, but also will meet at the end in a public forum to share what the findings are of the report. So, any questions?
I have a couple.
Please.
So, we already went through the whole comprehensive plan a couple of years ago, and then so the trouble that was, was they made this nice big report, and then there was no assistance with executing instead of report. If we go down this route of doing the same thing on the financial side and get this nice report, is there assistance that is from DCD or this consultant or whoever actually executing that report?
Additional phases, yes, there are.
Okay, so we pay more for that, how do you go for it?
You do, but it's the same match. So Sunbury would pay 30%, and the Commonwealth would pay 70%.
So we wouldn't necessarily be paying again for the comprehensive plan. It would be paying to actually execute the comprehensive plan at this point. Is there any other municipalities you can name locally to us that have gone through this program in like the last five years, let's say?
Not locally in Northumberland County. But if you went over to Schoolkill County, Minersville has done this, and they finished, I believe it was last year, so you could give them a call. I could give you the contact information for them to. Shenandoah Borough in Schoolkill County also has an early intervention program.
Have they seen improvements since?
Yes. Yes, both of them have.
Chris, I think you're right. You should get a copy of theirs, read over the report, what changes they implied or suggested to them and so forth, just to get a review, possibly get out of it.
And by starting the process, we're not locking into anything, so if we go down the route of application, RFP, whatever, we're not locked in until we get the bids back, is that correct?
Well, until you award the bid.
Until we award the bid.
Right.
So we still could explore this opportunity all the way, so we don't have to wait three months, do our research, and then start the process.
Absolutely.
We could start the process, do our research, and then decide whether we want to continue.
You're also not locked into implementing any of the recommendations. We would hope that you would.
You'd waste the money if you didn't.
Right, but if you don't, that is entirely up to your body to determine.
Is Schmoken McGinnitys?
Schmoken, they had, they had an early intervention program that was years ago before I started working. They're in something now called Act 47, and that's a completely different program. That's for municipalities that are in severe financial crises, and that's the case in Schmoken. So we still provide, but we choose the contractors to work with them, and it is strongly suggested that they implement everything in recovery plans developed for them.
So different than Shenandoah and Minersville?
Yes.
Okay, what about Williamsport? Was Williamsport involved in this?
I'm not sure about Williamsport because that's not my region.
They did a drastic change around that.
I'll give you the name of the pro-manager in Minersville, and he's very easy to converse with, and he'll tell you.
What was in the meetings that you guys had? What was the opinions of the other organizations, you know, the organizations outside?
As far as this participation?
Yeah, this program and, you know.
So it was very positive, and I think the point from Mr. Ritzick, and then as he explained it to us, that following this assessment, if this assessment includes a recommendation as far as implementing the comprehensive plan, then when we apply for other grants or support for objectives that apply to objectives in that comprehensive plan, that's another supporting information to say, well, it was in our strategic management plan
Right.
to do our comprehensive plan, so it kind of gives credence and support to asking for help with those particular projects that fall under the comprehensive plan. It also, and some of the grant applications or programs that are out there, sometimes one of the first questions is, are you Act 47 or using this implementation plan, improvement plan? And if the answer is yes, it's a little bit higher consideration than in the list of everybody that's applying. So it can give you an advantage in that way. One of the other things that I wanted to point out, just from my perspective and coming in as the new city manager, we've kind of implemented this new role, and how this role now can be exercised in how we manage our department, how we provide our government services most efficiently. This is an assessment that I would need in order to do my job and make the improvements and manage the city and the departments in a way that's most advantageous to the city and most efficient with budget-wise. And so I, so there's two reasons why I would like to see it done. One is to get a baseline of where the city is in this comprehensive review, so that I can move forward as the manager and work on the things that need to be worked on to improve the status of the city, and the other is with a comprehensive plan to pursue this community and economic development in future phases.
Is this a long-term plan?
When we did it before, it was probably eight years ago.
2008.
2009 is the published date of the EIP, was to 2009. The comprehensive plan, which gives you the kind of roadmap toward community and economic development, that was done in 2012, adopted by the council in 2012. But that's a different thing.
And when that person came in, he went to every department. I was the treasurer then. He didn't quite make it to my department because all he did was gloom and doom to the whole city. We were gonna be bankrupt in five years if we didn't do what he said.
That's the 2009 one, not the 2012. It's a different thing.
Doesn't matter.
Those are two completely different assessments.
And that's a different program.
Yeah.
So what makes it different?
What makes it different is that the program has a different outcome. The program has grown, and the consultants are better able to put together an entire package that will work for the municipalities. And I also say, the city of Carbondale, Upper Lackawanna County, is currently in the EIP program, and they're discovering a lot of things that have been helpful to them, none of which is built in blue.
And I think that, I mean, in my experience with planning budgets, you know, three to five years in advance, kind of anticipating your financial status, major purchases, and other things, that we can do a better job of managing that longer-term financial picture.
So what do you think for tonight, guys?
Yes, sir.
If one of the implementation recommendations is to update and amend our existing zoning ordinance and also the subdivision land development ordinance, would that be covered at 70% of all?
Yes. We've done that. Codification, if you haven't done codification in a while, that's something that seems to be popular in some municipalities, so we still do the 70-30 split for that too, because that could be kind of expensive.
And one more question I have. The match, you mentioned the in-kind. Would the match be from CDBG funds?
I'm gonna turn that back to Mike.
So it's, on the CDBG side of things, if you have budgeted CDBG funds for planning, and that planning was related, then that could be something that could be used if you're doing the actual work or if you're paying a consultant to do the actual work on that end. That certainly could assist with the in-kind if you will. But it would need to be geared towards the, so if you're doing a street project, that's not necessarily part of your comprehensive plan. That may not be used as in-kind. Or if you're doing demolition, let's say.
I was thinking as a part of the admin, one of the CDBG, if it was budgeted, is approved by the department.
The city certainly can set aside a portion of their CDBG funds, I believe it's up to 10%, for planning purposes. So if you want to kind of mesh those, if you will, that may work for you in relieving some of that 30% burden. Thank you.
Thank you.
To me, it's a no-brainer to at least continue to look into it as far as talking to other municipalities that are currently going through it, researching the cost structure long-term. So I don't know if we need a motion to continue research, or if we should do that.
You can just do that. If you wanted to make a motion to have someone complete the application, you can do that too. Again, as you pointed out, you're not locked into anything. Because at some point, they just need a motion authorizing some member of the city to complete that application and to be the go-between.
I'd like to continue on. I'd like to get some more of the powers that you have left to work with, and get their feedback on some of their reports, which would be. Agreed. I'm saying tonight, though, I would make a motion to allow Jody to do the actual application, so that way, as we do our research, let's say, three weeks from now, we come back and we're like, yeah, this sounds really great. We don't have to then approve her to do it and then start the application process. She can start it, move forward a little bit with it, do our research, and then the next meeting, come back and report what we found. Or two meetings from now, even if that, so that's my motion to allow.
I second your motion.
Carl Lovich.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Oh, Reese. There's only one of ya.
Okay.
Shall I give you my contacts in Carbondale and Minersville?
Yes, please. I'll collect all the contacts and I'll send that list out, so you can, if you'd like, the council members can contact individually, or if you'd like, I can ask them to send me their reports. However, I can talk to you individually, find out what you prefer.
Are they third-class cities?
Carbondale is, yes.
Check into the Williamsport. It's very impressive the way they turned that down.
I will gladly.
On that, no, that's the best.
Well, thank you so much for coming and joining us in the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, council, now back to getting on order again. Councilman Ister, the resolution?
I have a resolution here with Penn Dot on the North Forest Street project. They're giving us $180,000. I'd like to make a motion. The mayor signs this documentation, which they're gonna be giving us the funds to take and put into our project on North Forest Street.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Ister. Carl Lovich.
Yes.
The next thing, we're talking about North Forest Street. We have ready to award that contract for $976,488.15. Money's coming from the 180 I just mentioned, two different brands, Greenlight Go. Chris Reese has money involved in it, to the fuel money. I think we got it covered there, Chris.
Yeah, we cut it down further than what was originally intended.
Municipal authority has money in the pot, and they're also doing Packard and Park Street, Culver's. Make a motion to award this contract.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovich.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Aaron Doyle is from the Milton area and was previously a police officer for the Montoursville Police Department. He is currently employed as an EMT for Evangelical Hospital. He has worked in the emergency service center for the past 20 years. I make a motion to hire Aaron Doyle as a part-time police officer at the rate of $22 an hour. Do I have a second?
Reese.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovich.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Mrs. Doyle. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Aaron Doyle, do solemn swear.
I, Aaron Doyle, do solemn swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Yes, thank you. I have received three letters of interest from residents of Sunbury to be on our Shade Tree Commission. I make a motion to appoint the following three residents as Shade Tree Commissioners for Sunbury. Joe Bartello for a five-year term, Robert Snyder for a four-year term, and Beth Kramer for a three-year term. Do I have a second?
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovich.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Reese.
Joe and Robert, okay. Can you see me afterwards so I can give you some papers?
Sure.
Thanks. Alright, Ms. Ockert, the 205.
Yes. There we go. Alright, so a few months ago, the mayor was cleaning out his office, and he found a bag of quarters hidden in the back corner of a closet. And that, the amount of quarters, they're all dated between the 1960s and mid-1970s.
1965.
1965 to 1970s. And anyway, so it's found money, $250 worth of quarters. They are not worth anything more than their face value. And because the, and the source of this money is unknown, nobody knows how it came to be there. There are some. Anyway, not even to go there. So, anyway, as it happens, the Music in the Park program is currently underfunded by several hundred dollars, and so I'm asking if the council will approve the use of this bound $250 to go toward the Music in the Park program.
Make that into a form of motion.
Kramer.
Yes.
Reichtner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Carl Lovich.
Yes.
What was it, yours and those coins?
1965 to 1970, whatever, two, three, four, I don't know.
I did take those quarters to two different coin shops, and they all said they're worth only face value.
They're counting Kevin now.
So they must have been stashed away sometime in their 70s.
No, no, you haven't died. No, no, it works.
Alright, so more money coming in. If you remember, a couple of months ago, I received permission from the council to get rid of and to a buyback program, some cellphones that were no longer being used, and from that, we received $985, and brought that into the treasurer's office. This money was applied to the cellular bill based on the recommendation of our city treasurer, and I'm just advising the council, that's what happens, and I don't know if you need to vote and say, yes, we approve that transaction, but.
Just let me step by Verizon, put it back in the water.
Sounds good.
There we go. Next topic has to do with our DPW supervisor, Mr. Steve Welker. At the time of his hire, his salary was approved for $50,000 annually. Since that time, Mr. Welker has confirmed that he elects not to receive health benefits through the city, which will save the city over $30,000 annually. Other employees who defer health benefits receive additional compensation. Mr. Welker brings extensive experience and skill to the position. He has already made significant improvements in the department that are projected to save the city more money, thousands of dollars as well. The DPW personnel budget was discussed with Councilman Reese, and in order to appropriately compensate Mr. Welker for his deferment of the health benefits and to retain his continued employment with a salary commensurate with his capabilities and value to the city, I'm recommending that we adjust his salary to $56,000. I'm recommending that we adjust his salary to $56,000 annually.
I'll make that into a motion.
I want to ask you something.
Sure.
For all the other employees in the city, when they don't take health insurance, they get $300, $200, or anything?
Sure.
Three hundred? Three hundred?
Yes, I, I mean, I, I factored that in too. But when you look at what Steve's done from when he started to now, and the value that he brings, I think giving him this small bump and to get him to where he's at, he saved us more in the difference that we're going to make from that 300 to that. I think this is more of also looking at the job description that he's been given and him going above and beyond that in his first 90 days. I think that this salary level matches more to, it's still less than what we were coming into the year budgeting. And it matches better to what his experience and the things he's already done. I think it matches better with that.
And I just want to comment, working with Steve, doing a fantastic job. And does have a lot of knowledge.
Yeah, he's thought of more ideas too. So I just hate to lose it over a couple of dollars. Fifty-six was where he felt comfortable too, and where I felt comfortable. So that's where we're at.
But here again, like you said, the city is on the backside of the healthcare.
Massive. Yep. Also, I mean, what he's going to be able to do, inspections within the city, he's going to be able to do a lot of the street inspections himself. Be able to take better care to save us a lot of money long-term that weren't being done previously. His, his knowledge and experience, so that's why that's my recommendation is the fifty-six.
And also what he's done with the yes, David.
Yes.
He'll make that up right there.
Yep. So I'll make that into a motion.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Carl Lovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Okay, next. Last month, we, the council did accept the resignation of DPW Assistant Supervisor Ken Long. And so Mr. Welker, the supervisor, has selected Mr. Craig Long to be promoted to Assistant Supervisor. Mr. Long has been receiving additional training and he's accepted additional responsibilities that go with the position. The DPW, again, personnel budget was discussed with Councilman Reese, and the recommendation is to approve, promote Mr. Long to the position of Assistant DPW Supervisor and increase his hourly wage to $18 an hour.
What's your minimum?
Fifteen oh five.
Second.
Easter?
Yes.
Carl Lovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Okay. The city administration office received a fee waiver request from the Sunbury Northumberland Swim Team to use the Sunbury UCA Community Center pool for their home meets. They have done this previous years. Normally, the fee would be $285 for four hours. Their liability insurance has been verified. Recommend the council makes a motion to waive the rental fee for the swim team.
Carl Lovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Okay, the city administration office received an open container resolution request from Sunbury Revitalization Incorporated for Saturday, August 17th, 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. in conjunction with River Fest. A draft resolution is in your packet. Recommend that there is a motion to approve the open container resolution. Is it in there?
Yes.
Make that into a form of a motion.
Kramer?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Oh, sorry. I just read him the names.
Carl Lovich?
Yes.
All right. Next is a second reading for proposed ordinance modification. The pending soliciting code was modified, the wording, to specific paragraphs related to organizations who would be exempt from permit fees in order to include those who are distributing food, goods, wares, or whatever we're having for free and from which no proceeds are derived. This came from a specific request that we, we get about every year from an organization that distributes food to the needy in the park. They're not getting any proceeds from it. It wasn't included in the listed of exemptions, so I'm just recommending that we include it in the listed of exemptions. So I'm asking the council to make a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Reichter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Carl Lovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Okay, so the following is a proposed addendum to an existing ordinance, chapter. Chapter 163, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Parking Regulations. The draft is to add section 163-28.5, entitled Designation of Proprietary Parking Spaces. The purpose of this is to provide a mechanism by which a business may apply to the city for parking spaces in a municipal lot to be reserved and specified for that business only. These have been named proprietary parking spaces. The main points within the draft include a limit of 30% of the total spaces in the municipal lot. If the requested parking spaces would put that lot over 30% proprietary spaces, that would have to be brought to the council for consideration. Otherwise, the city administrator can approve up to three spaces per business. Again, not going over the 30% in the entire lot. And requests for more than three spaces would be brought to council because it would be a larger amount of our municipal lot being designated.
Is there any provision for someone who, say, has a, a business on a, on a side street that they don't have any parking for? Giving them a parking place?
It's only for, in the municipal lots. It's not for streets with meter parking.
Whether it's over here. It's just a street.
Just a street? It's not currently in there?
That would mean, um, DPW would have to see about parking for them, or something like that.
Yeah.
Which have done, like loading jobs, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
That would have to come, if it's not, it would just come off the legislature about that.
All right.
So is that something that you want to see in the ordinance itself or just go on as we have been doing on a case-by-case basis?
If it's not a B issue, uh.
Yeah, I'm just, on a case-by-case basis, that's fine.
Okay. The draft ordinance also specifies that applicants, applications will be accepted annually in September. And then provides a timeline for the application review, notification to applicants of their approval, disapproval, and an opportunity, if they are disapproved, to appeal to the council. Timing is such that the approved spaces would go into effect as of January 1st of that following year. Applications that are submitted outside of September may be considered at the discretion of the city administrator and the Department of Parks and Public Property Department head. So if somebody, so annually, we'll accept applications in September. And this will give me an opportunity to review the applications in total, so I know exactly how many spaces might be requested in a certain municipal lot and ensure that we're not going over the 30% kind of all at one time. And all the approval process would, would take place on that timeline so that by the time the, the next year's fee schedule is approved by the council, then the fees would also then fall into place for having the spaces. However, if there is a business who wishes to apply outside that timeframe, they could apply at the discretion of the city manager and the department head. And then if approved, they would be prorated. The fees assigned, just to submit the application, would require a $25 administration fee. Then the fee for the spaces themselves is based on the, I think it was raised. The monthly parking pass municipal lot fee that's published in the annual fee schedule, plus a $10 premium charge to have specifically designated spaces. So currently, that would be $30 a month per space, which would be $360 per year per space. This is similar to the fee for an annual parking permit that person could park in any metered spot for, $360 a year.
So the fee for this isn't in the ordinance, it's per the schedule, oh, fee schedule?
Right. So I did want to specify a fee here and then have the fee schedule not match up to it. That's why I made it reliant on whatever the fee schedule says for those other.
Did we, I forget, did we change the fee for yearly passes to park in more market space?
No, it's for the system.
I thought it was only two.
No, it's for the system.
Additionally, the ordinance does provide specifications for the signs that should be demarcating the spaces. And if the signs are made by DPW, the cost would be based on the cost of materials and labor to produce the signs. And I worked with Steve in the Department of Public Works, and the, the cost of making a sign is about $75. So that would be if the city provided. The business can purchase their own signs, but they still have to meet the dimensions and include the information, such as the name of the business and when those parking spaces are in effect. So say it's a business that's only open from nine to five, then that designated designation for their business should be only effective from nine to five. And outside those hours, for instance, a resident of downtown could park their vehicle in the municipal lot in that space. And in the ordinance, a contract would be required that would specify the location of the spaces, days and times in effect, and would provide for the, to be able to rescind the contract with 30 days' notice. If that become necessary. It also, the contract would also have a clause to prohibit, be able to prohibit parking in those spaces due to emergencies or requirements for maintenance or repairs. And then that contract could be renewed for one additional year. So you get your, your first year, you have the option to renew for one more year, but after two years, the business would have to reapply. And the reason I've kind of put that in there was that, so that other businesses might have the opportunity to get designated spaces and it wouldn't be one business having it all the time. Again, it's just.
So first come, first served?
So if I get, so when we do it like at, at an annual basis, when they all come in in September, if there were a high demand.
Sure.
If I look and say, okay, in this lot, this one is, is requesting two, this one's requesting three, somebody else is requesting another three, and that goes over the 30% limit, then I would try to negotiate with those applicants to say, okay, will you accept only two, or will you accept only one? And then get beneath that 30% threshold.
Deal with it as it comes.
And deal with it as it comes, yeah.
Question, if there's nobody applying for parking lot X and there's two people in it, if there's nobody applying, then there's no sense of going through all this paperwork to renew, other than pay the fee?
And if you had that parking spot from day one, the first time it's doing this in September, how do you feel that person should have to rest that as long as this is operation?
It's a fair, it's a fair argument.
First come, first served, I mean, it should be, if I'm, if I'm like State Farm, if I'm there now, I'd like to be there 20 years from now, you know what I mean? Because I'm there since the beginning, you know?
I just can't seem to go through the paperwork where there's nobody else applying.
Nobody else applying. As long as they're paying their, paying their dues, they can work without tax, I mean, that's what we set out.
So what I had was that they could indicate their desire to renew by October 31st. That way, we would have, any additional applications would have come in in September. And I would know if there was anybody else, we would know if there was anybody else applying for spots in that lot, in that lot as well.
Kevin helping out here, we don't have a great demand.
No, because we always turned them down in the past, you know? When I was ahead of the street side, never getting spot working out, until we just gave this last one out to State Farm. Basically, they're the only ones we go for right now.
Not Chris.
Not Chris. Market Street. Until like a barbershop boss came in and asked. But really, there isn't a demand, but this might open floodgates when everybody else, you know, see, hey, I can get around parking spaces, you know?
If you're a business, why would it?
It's something in business.
Yeah, to, to purr, but prices from.
But then also, if you're a business, you, you want to make parking available for your customers too, not, you know? I mean, some people's gonna probably park their own private cars or, you know?
That's always.
Like the barbershop, but I, I don't know if, if Ed uses his for his own use or for his customers, I'm not quite sure.
Back to the timeframe, Jody.
Mm-hmm.
The reason you and I, we're discussing this every day, if a business comes into town in October, okay? It doesn't have a chance until the following year.
No, no, no. That's why I put in there, anytime outside that timeline, they can be prorated. They can, they can go ahead and submit their application. And then the way I worded it was that applications submitted outside this September timeframe can be considered at the discretion of the city administrator and Department of Parks and Public Property. So yes, sir, you as a department head would say, I would still like this application to be considered at this time. And then if approved, then we would just prorate them.
So when I'm getting at to, if there's nobody even in the lot at that point in time,
Mm-hmm.
why should we go through all this extra hassle when you can just handle it?
That's fair.
But they pay for the dollars of the.
Well, yeah, it's prorated, like you just said. But we're proactive for business, why would we take and have any restrictions on it? If somebody wants to come to town even in November, whatever timeframe, unless, you know, if there's nobody in the lot and meets all the guidelines, sign them up. Just handle it and.
Take a 30% fulfillment.
Yeah, there's parking, well, like Kevin said, we don't, we only have the ones right now. So I don't know how much demand we're going to have, you know? Because if you add up, I'm not sure the total fees, and you add this up for one fiscal year, what, what's it going to cost?
I mean, we can put state welfare, you know, and, and believe me, there's 40 or 50 of them if you put out in the state on a monthly basis, not yearly basis.
That's not designated though.
No, that's just first come, first down.
Yeah.
Already called, why do you guys go over there?
Just, it isn't a designated part.
So you're saying, no matter what time of year, they can, they can put in their application, and as long as if we're under the 30% threshold, I can go ahead and I could go ahead and put them up?
I just think that's maybe.
It's not going to be, yeah.
Okay.
You still have the application time period for the initial, open it, and then for your renewals, you just go on the same schedule. These, those are going to be yearly, you gotta have a schedule. But then you have to accept anything outside the schedule if space is available.
Then it'll be system down next fiscal year.
And then they still can be prorated, and that way you don't have to worry about extra billing for the treasurer's office. Just prorate them to the end of the year and then start building in January of next year.
Okay.
I have, I have a couple of issues.
Yes.
I'm going to jump in. I think that, number one, you, just hearing everybody speak, I think we're going to need to include some kind of means of designating between applicants if there is a competing interest in parking spots. Because we can't, it wouldn't be legal for you to say, I'm choosing this person over this person.
Right.
Or this business over that business. So we have to come up with some sort of resolution as to how, if we're not going to use first come, first served, and if we're not going to allow. Well, that's what I'm asking. Earlier, we talked that it wasn't going to be.
Well, okay, when I, in the, in the wording that I put in here, when the total number of spaces requested by all applicants exceeds 30% of the total number of spaces in a municipal lot, the city administrator and department head will negotiate a resolution among relevant applicants by reducing the number of spaces requested. If a resolution cannot be negotiated, I put in here, spaces will be allotted by lottery.
But if you, if you were State Farm, you committed, you had these lots to share, and you commit next year. And a new business comes in and says, I want two more, and you commit two more. And then the third business comes in and says, yeah, I like two of them, because over 30%, you're not going to be able to give them to them because these people are already, we're on that list to have the parking.
And that, that's where I was going, that's where I was going, yes. I think we have to do that if we're not, I think we have to almost, in order to promote business, and this isn't really the legal realm, but I'm going to jump in anyway.
Okay.
Which I sometimes do. But in order to promote business, I don't think we can really say, well, you have these for these two years, but you might not have them two years after that, because how can you project?
Okay, so that would just mean removing that requirement to reapply after two years?
Yeah, and then.
And they can just continually.
Unless they miss out.
Renew the contract by paying their annual fee.
Yeah, I think that's quite.
At a certain date, I mean, if you have a 30-day deadline on that, and say October 15th, if it's not paid, guess what? You lose out there, that person coming in.
And the only other thing I would suggest is that, and maybe you already did this, Jody, and I just missed it, so I just looked at this this afternoon, but only allow permitted established businesses to apply. So you can't apply for this and then decide, and then say, well, I might open a business, or I might not. And you certainly can't do it, we can't allow it for individuals where there will be no parking whatsoever.
Right.
So I think it has to be permitted.
Terminated business. Permanent established businesses.
Established permanent business, yes, it has a certain permits. Yeah, it's gotta be on the books. That's the only other thing I'd suggest legally.
What about the rental units?
What about the rental units?
Can they?
The owner of the, of, of the, of the building that has multiple rental units, are they a business? Then can they definitely make spaces?
No, they're not, they're not defined as a business in our code.
Okay. So, applications can be approved at any time during the year, as long as it's under the thirty percent threshold. Allowing only permanent, established permitted businesses to apply. Remove the requirement for every two-year reconsideration, renewal, reapplication. And I think that's all I got for that session. Anything, did I miss anything?
Could I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Say, say the insurance company has their third spaces, okay, and their hours are nine to five, whatever. If somebody else parks there, who's gonna maintain that as far as that can be up to the city police department? Or who's, who's going to be to get these cars removed or fined or whatever out of there?
The, the person that owns the space, owns, is renting the spaces, would have to notify the police department?
Yeah, they would just, they would just call, say if somebody parked in their private, they're running the spot and avoid it.
Okay, so you would, you would be watched over that then?
No, we're not gonna be watching.
No, I mean, if they call you.
If they call, we'll just respond.
Okay.
And will those spots have signs that are designated to that business?
Yes, yes, the signs will require the, the name of the business and the effective days and times that the spot is reserved only for them.
Jody, you mentioned about they can make their own sign, or DPW can make the sign?
Correct.
That's my concern. Is the documentation in there, in that thing, is saying that these need to be specific? I don't wanna see part board duct tape on parking.
Right, so.
There's enough of that in the city, you know?
There's, there's some exact specifications.
Exact specifications.
The dimensions and, and what must be included on the sign.
Okay.
I don't wanna see duct tape.
The material of the sign.
Yeah, material isn't, isn't on there, but we can, I can add that, that it. Thank you. Okay, yeah, good point, thank you.
I have, I have a question too then. With Joe Bartella, with like the State Farm people, and is it gonna be like a level plan? Are they gonna come up to the regular fee, or are you gonna maintain what they're paying now?
I think that they will need to come up to the established fee. We, we didn't have a policy in place before.
No, I was, I was just asking.
Now we're establishing a new policy, and I think that we would make it in effect for them the next time they renew. I don't know.
I think they just pay it for the rest of the year, but you know, I would say that September affected for them, they might not in January.
One other thing, that this gentleman's question honestly brought up was a great question, because we don't really have an enforcement provision for what we're talking about, and it would not probably fall under this section of the code. But somewhere, we're gonna have to stick in, you can't park in a designated business parking spot.
Is that already in ordinances?
I don't think so.
It's a, it's a.
But don't we have that in the I C N D, private park, parking there?
There's private parking in order. You might wanna, you might, what I'm suggesting is probably maybe add an addendum to that, private parking.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, because the, I mean, it's not like it's a.
I don't have the corollaries.
A handicap spot, that's, there's a law for that. It's not like it's the courthouse spots, they have a specific thing for that, but these, we probably ought to put something.
I think.
Or they won't have it, or they'll lead it.
Yeah, but can nobody ask the park to actually?
Yeah, yeah, that's simple, I mean, it's a parking lot, but, I'm just saying.
Hey, Joel, Joel, Joel.
Yes.
I did some research on this for our lot a few years ago. And you said they do have the state published regulations on how you set it up, how your sign has to read, exactly what you have to put on there, and then the process you do if someone's not parking your lot properly.
I agree, Bill.
So you have to follow that.
The only difference is, I believe you, your company owns your lot, correct?
Yeah.
This is different, because it's a city-owned spot.
Right.
Being used by another entity. So there, I do think we have to throw something in our ordinance.
But that's what I'm saying, I think you have to go back and check the stakes, I mean, they, they may address that also, if they remember correctly.
No, I understand, good point.
I just have one real question.
Yeah, I'll find it.
Jody. I just have, just going out here in the limb, but say they want three parking spots, and they would request one of those to be handicapped. Is that something they can do? Or, I, I'm just throwing that out there.
They have to go through our handicap application process.
I'm just throwing it out just in case somebody asks that, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know.
We might charge for that, because we've given handicapped bases in different areas to different businesses.
Right.
And I think that also falls, it also requires, requires, which is lots already all have.
I would say if they're leasing the spot itself, there should be a charge, because you could give them the handicap spot on the street itself.
I'm not, this is just.
I would make a, 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 she can't really publish a lot. Pardon, pardon, I've been trying to listen intensely, but is this only in city parking lots? It's not on the main street or anything like that, right?
No.
It's only in city-owned parking lots, correct? Like all city-owned parking lots?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't heard anybody make any exceptions to anything for city lots. You apply to all. Okay. We need to make a motion to accept this as the first reading.
Make a, make this into a form of motion to accept this as a first reading with the revisions that we've discussed.
Reese.
Abstain.
Easter.
Yes.
Carl Lovich.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Jody, how's those from parking lots?
Yes.
Let's go back to the parking lot behind the warehouse in Chesna Street, the lot down in Second and Spruce. Of course, a lot of the peritoneses. We have posted everything, no parking.
Okay.
Okay, why?
It was discussed with you, the property's being surveyed.
At the wetlands?
Yes.
Warehouse in Chesna Street and South Second.
Oh, that's Steve Welker.
Okay, so it was a discussion with Steve, and he said there were some problems being able to move things in and out of the, of the warehouse, and that they weren't, they weren't established parking lots. So I wasn't sure, and I was concerned that there could be a liability to the city if anything happened to any vehicles that were parked in there, and it's not a designated space. And the other concern was, there was another location where I, and maybe this isn't one of the ones you're concerned about, a, a, a building had been torn down, and people had just kind of ad hoc started parking in there, but they're, they're having to drive up over a curb, so it's not even a real parking lot. And it was causing damage to the sidewalk and the curving, and that one was also close. And I, I can't remember, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, where that was.
Second and Spruce, that's the one for sale. Back to the one behind the warehouse, you know, I'm referring to. That doesn't affect going in and out of the warehouse at all, okay?
I can, I can go down to Steve tomorrow and look at it.
Oh.
Remember seeing that, we're gonna, she may have just worked with Jody on that, I'll go down and look at it with him. If you wanna be, if they have to take a look at it.
Well, it's, it's shale, okay? The building was torn down, parking was owned by Wise Martens, donated to the city, and we tore the building down and put shale in there. Now, the neighbors parked in there for I don't know how many years now, it wasn't twenty years, but at least six, eight years, I'm guessing.
That's Long Rattberry.
Yes, now all of a sudden, they can't park here. Now, you, you were saying about the exposure, we have exposure every day, every night in the city of summer. I mean, that's no different than parking in behind City Hall here. We still have exposure.
That's a paid parking lot, though.
Well, it's completely.
So when, when we. My question is this, so when we list for our insurance company, our properties as, as parking lots, do we list those properties?
Sure, everything's, yeah.
It says, man, but some of this is parking.
But by same token, when there's ballgames up at the other end of town, you park on the grass, that's not parking lot. What's the difference?
No, I'm not saying, that's what we just say, this is, this is, that's not a parking, there's no difference as far as I'm concerned.
I just don't understand why you upset the neighborhood, because it's sweeper night, they park there. Now they don't have no place to park, and the question was asked, why? That's what I'm asking.
All right, I'll be happy to reconsider, and I think, pick together and, and look at it.
I don't know, I don't know, I'll have to look at it with you. Talk with Steve with his reasoning and just look at it.
I know you mentioned about having a sale towards the end of the year. That parcel we find a deed, Joe, be one of the perfect ones to sell off, it's been there for at least fifteen years, probably. For the home there we tore down, and there it sits.
Who owned it before, Jim? You say wives?
Oh, no, not that parcel.
Oh, okay.
Second and Spruce was owned, I don't know, a bank gave it to us. I remember.
All right, I'll talk to you about it.
Yeah, because it was a house.
Oh.
But back to the last, so it's still a parking. I wanna just jump ahead here, because over here is Lisa Air Salon on the over the parking lot here on Market Street. She's been parking there, Kevin, what, ten years?
Well, she's at State Farm, she's in an office.
So, Chris, that doesn't change.
Ninety-four.
That doesn't change the amount of stalls being used, because she's been there forever. If only she wanted, it was two designated stalls alongside of the State Farm guy.
I would just wait and tell them.
Well, sometimes, whatever you're told by her, she should come to Jenny, her sister come to Jenny, and Lisa comes in. There's a parking, they park on the Fifth Street lot, south by, by Burger King. And sometimes when they're eight, nine o'clock, working, and they leave, and they go down that door, on the alleyway, the Stroll Alleyway, and, you know, me and women are kind of intimidated going down there, that's why they go on the two.
Chris, I just wanna get taken care of, they've been waiting and waiting and waiting.
They've been asking for years.
And other than getting that is, after we do this, and when we get this finished, then they can do the paperwork. And so with you having an application ready for this year anyhow.
I, I would, I would recommend, if it's a lighting situation for that alley, we figure out why the lights aren't working, fix the lights, and wait on the parking until the ordinance is passed, so everybody knows what the rules are.
I thought we took them all out of there.
No, the lights are still attached to the building.
Oh.
So if the lights aren't working, maybe we should fix it for the, the business.
Which lights you're referring to?
I think they said that the, the lights in Stroll Alley are not functioning.
I have no knowledge of it. You know about, Mr. Bear?
I think I did mention it to you when I talked to Lisa and them about it, and Kate, I talked to.
Okay, no mistake. Anyhow, I'd like to make a motion that we give two stalls to Lisa Air Salon when the application becomes.
But I would like to just table that motion until after this ordinance is passed for the second reading, so everybody knows what the prices are, what the regulations are, what we have to do.
I'd like to take and do it tonight.
How will price?
Well, whatever we come up with. Like I said, the, the fact that we don't have this, as soon as this is finished, then she'll know, she may not even want them there.
Is that gonna put us over thirty percent now, huh? I don't think it's ever.
Well, remember, that lot also has the, um, police.
Police Department.
Department. But if we, if we discounted them, I, I keep going to count spaces in there, that there were forty-one spaces. I can double-check. With the three with State Farm, then two would be five, if we didn't even count the police reserve spaces.
Right. They're gonna get theirs one or the other, so we shouldn't tell them, but you need to just personalize.
That's what I'm saying, total, total spaces, including everything, all total spaces in there is forty-one. Now, and of that, three have been designated for State Farm, so.
Twelve, twelve points, so you can miss it. So you'd set twelve, well, you could have set.
You, I mean, would it be acceptable to you, because we're gonna have a second reading for this in two meetings, if that concern is eight, nine o'clock, or at the time of the year, that eight, nine o'clock gets the light out, you know, it's, it's not dark yet. I would be comfortable seconding that at second reading, because then we know the process is in place.
Well, it, it would make it real easy, the only thing, because we just discussed first come, first served. I don't want them to take and.
You want them to lose out.
I mean, why can't you just give them the two spots, like, you know, like we're doing on State Farm, and then September thirtieth, it's gonna come in, you charge them a new rate by everybody else.
But then why would you want new businesses to jump in this, if it's first come, first served, the ordinance hasn't even passed yet?
Well, they've been asking for a long time.
They've been there forever.
They've been asking.
Well, they're not, well, no, hey, so, they're gonna buy their own signs?
Well, they, or they're gonna take and pay the city.
At, at the cost. You charge them what you're charging, you know, the State Farm, so it's the same cost for this year, with the expectation of knowing, if this passes, you have to apply like everyone else, you have to pay your application fee, you have to pay the higher rate, and you put the spots in now, since it's someone that's been wanting. They're the ones that really started this whole conversation.
Exactly.
By wanting the spots. I'd be comfortable with that, to have a second.
We can afford a motion then.
Carl Lovich.
No.
Kramer.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Easter.
Yes, thanks.
Councilman Rechner in the heart.
Uh, what about the Howard property?
Sorry, we have a Howard property in here. Mr. Howard, who owns the properties on Penn Street, which were recently demolished, has an adjacent property with garage structure, which is also in poor repair and may also be, need to be demolished. And he wishes to give this property to the city. It's open for your discussion. Acquiring the property would need a title search, which would cost two to three hundred dollars. Joel, do you have any comments on it?
Well, yeah, I had, I mean, this isn't the first we've talked about this, obviously, I talked with Jody earlier today, I talked with Rick and Jim, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago about it. Quite honestly, I wanted to bring it up here tonight simply because I want, I think that before we expend the money on it, there should be a consensus. Legally, I think it's a good idea to get the thing. Perhaps, knowing that there's a structure on it after the structure is destroyed, or with the idea that we're gonna destroy the structure the minute it comes into our hands, to remove any and all liability because of the structures, current situation. So my recommendation is, I don't think you ever turn down, probably, somebody who wants to give you a gift, but at the same time, I think we'd need to either have the building torn down first, or have the wherewithal to tear the building down, basically, the minute we take the property. That's my suggestion, just avoid any liability issue.
Well, Joel, let's do it this way, let's go back to the county. Pat Mack can get that lined up.
That's what I said to Jody earlier.
Get a price, a demo, so Pat knows, get everything arranged, so when we're signing the paperwork, the time track already has been ordered and ready to go.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Is this one, I don't know this property, is this one, is this one, is the one that got torn down already?
Yes.
Apparently.
It's meaning.
That's what I'm.
I guess the question would be whether the county would give us the money if we had, if we took ownership, would they still give us the money now?
I believe they, yes, from legal reasons.
The, the county would give us money even if we took ownership?
That I don't know.
Okay, how's it?
Well, again, that's why. Everything, document is done, so when we do take, now, there, there might be a couple of days, and we turn over tools, and we don't let it set for months.
No, no, but, I'm sorry, Jim, I don't think you're understanding this question, that we gotta make sure the county is still going to pay for the demolition if we own it.
Because they say you own that property, you pay to destroy it. We're, we're the county, we're not gonna give you the money anymore.
We talked about it, two, three weeks, plenty of me.
And they're okay with us taking the ownership and then paying us to tear it down?
The only thing we went to, we had the discussion about the demo of the building, he said, well, let me know when we, we don't even own it yet. But we can do a follow-up.
Okay. In that, in that building, just, I don't, I'm not so familiar with it, never had any residents, right? Wasn't residents?
No, it was, it was the business.
Okay.
It's the block right behind the one we tore down.
Okay.
Not that one.
I think we need a motion to tell me to go ahead and do a title search of the deed, and how about the.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Easter. Carl Lovich.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes, and just, Joel, you can just check with the county, confirm that they will give us that money, that way we don't waste the money on title search.
I probably won't, because they have their own solicitors, and I don't get, but I'll ask Jim too, if that's okay?
Whatever does.
I can't just contact them, I gotta contact their solicitor, their solicitor's got, they're, they're.
Whatever is the easiest way, just to make sure that they're ready to, maybe we don't.
Jody, can you provide me tomorrow, maybe with the, I wonder, do we have it already?
Yeah, I don't know, it's, can you dress?
Okay, I'll find it, I'll find it. Okay, I'll find it, I'll find it.
And I want to make sure, are we going to have someone check the lights on Stroll Alley and see what reason they're not working? If they're not working, get them corrected?
Sure, whatever you want.
Councilman Rechner?
Okay, one, five twenty-one, Kristen Marie Riles submitted a proposal for, too hard to do some general improvements on the property, let's say, the historical. Art met and found what they want to do was in line with the historic district. So they've done a favor, I want to make a motion that we, okay, follow what Art recommended and allow them to go ahead and do the rest of the property.
Second.
Carl Lovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kramer?
It's been brought to my attention that we have a parking lot that's strictly permit only behind the Packer House, and they would like to make arrangements to purchase this so they can expand their business and put in a freezer, refrigerator unit to hold their additional products so they have storage. It's a permit parking lot, no one ever parks in it. The only time anybody parks in it is they go to the Packer House or something. So I would like to make a motion that we work with them to work out an arrangement so they can have that parking lot.
I think we should table this into further research.
While they're here.
I actually know a business, well, a business and market that would like to get some spaces out back in that lot.
It's the art, right?
Yes.
That's why I was bringing that up, I don't know if it would make sense.
Well, there's other lots back there. This is the only one that's permanent.
Is it the one beside?
It's the one right behind, and then there's another one beside that, and then there's another one on Arch Street.
Is it where the people are, you guys are here, and the ones that the art is parking in now, where they have one or two spaces? Is this the, they don't put out their spaces, but I think they've just been using them?
They've been using some of those, but there's also the other, the.
Metered spots.
Metered spots, and there's no shortage of spaces there, but it's the only place we have to expand.
Yeah.
It's not that we want to take spaces from anybody, that's not our intent, but in order to expand, we need to go back that direction. And it is barely wide enough to get the cars in as it is. And if you don't go through our lot to get out, you, and there's people parked on both sides, you have to back out into the alley. So that makes it kind of treacherous. And the end spot, if we don't get it, I will be coming to have no parking on that one end spot because if you can pull out, that, if someone parks in those end spots, you can't see. It's white, pulling up line. So if not, we would like to request two less spots so no one gets killed pulling out.
Legally, can we even just sell someone a spot, or does it have to go out for bid?
Yeah, that's what I was just asking.
We're just asking to begin the discussion of what we have to do.
Yeah.
I think, I think it probably would have to go out to bid, but they could certainly bid, and the decision would have to be made to put it out to bid and, you know, win the white house. I mean, yes, but yeah, the answer to your question is yes, I think it would have to be.
In other, in other instances, haven't we leased a parking lot or something, parking places?
Let's pull the deed to see what we got.
Yeah, that's fine. And we, really, I should have, I need the designation. Can I ask a quick question? Is this the area, when you say behind the place, is this the area like towards?
Fourth Street.
Arch Street or towards Fourth Street? Fourth Street.
We own the place towards Arch Street.
That's what I thought. So this would be the area of your, surrounding your building there, towards Fourth Street, off the alley?
Towards, yes.
Okay, I got it.
Just the permit part.
I understand.
Not, it's about ten spaces, maybe twelve spaces, not the meter.
So my question, those three parking lots right there that we own, are those three different properties or all one property parcel?
That's what I'm going to have to find out.
That deed from that parking lot comes from us. That was part of the Packer House deed.
Which, which parking lot? Which parking lot?
The one that we're talking about.
Okay.
The one that is permit only, that came off the back end of that lot. It was changed, we swapped the lot to the side of the Aldine.
Now I got it.
For the two.
Okay, I understand.
It was equal square footage, and we just changed them. Now we're asked, so that would come back to us originally.
So it should be separate, the deed.
Well, they're going to have to be, yeah.
It has, it's a separate deed from the, that L one was there a long time before.
Right, right.
We took over, which is more than twenty years.
We're due the deed.
I'll find it, yeah. If we have to. The other thing, well, the other thing is we can discuss a lease, you can discuss anything you want. Would you be satisfied with the lease, or do you really want to purchase it? Well, it sounds like you want to put an extension of your business on there, so you almost have to purchase it, right?
No, I think the extension's a nerve proper, am I correct?
No.
Well, it depends upon how, so, these are my daughters. It's a family business, we want to expand. And it's, if we, if we want to keep growing, and it is a growing business in Sunbury, which is not a lot of those around at the moment, we need to expand because we are fresh and seasonal. So when we have events, it all comes in fresh. We don't have freezer space, we don't have anything we need refrigeration space because they're doing such a good job at selling. When we have multiple parties at a day, two, three days in a row, which we have had, we don't have the space. So if we only have a little space, that's as far as we can grow. If we can grow farther and with set back rules, if we, you know, we can't, the kitchen needs to expand. We can't expand to the side because that's the dining room, that's not the kitchen. The kitchen is where we're having some growth issues and then basically refrigeration, fresh food.
I'll, I'll pull the deed, I'll get a copy of the deed to everybody, and we can discuss it and get back to these folks. Is that okay?
And when you discuss it, can we be part of the discussion?
That's what I'm saying, we'll come back to you at the next meeting. Because I can't have more, we can't do it as a group because that would be a violation of the sunshine act and just a mark for you as a group.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds great.
Taxation. We have on the list of taxes, the donations, ten people for a total of one thousand dollars and fifty-nine cents to go back to two thousand and twelve. Most of them are deceased. I'd like to make a motion that we.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ice. Carl Lovich?
Yes.
Kramer? Kramer?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve voucher payment records for the general fund.
We need your vote.
I thought we did.
It's all right.
Just you.
Just you?
Yes.
Now, for five twenty-two, for the general fund, we have forty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-five cents. For the general fund for six-ten, we have eighty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-three cents. For liquid fuel for five twenty-two, we have thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. And for six-ten, we have five thousand dollars. I'd like to make a motion that we pay these bills.
Reese?
Yes.
Ice?
Yes.
Carl Lovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Okay, whole business. The previous council meeting, we discussed the efforts by Spark to erect a viewing platform in Riverfront Park. And I have brought up that there was a letter from the Sunbury Municipal Authority that opposed the building of the platform, and there was some question as to the validity of that letter. I did confirm with Sunbury Municipal Authority that opposition to the building of the structure is their official position on that, and that they do, they did provide me with another letter with a signature on it that says that they do not support any structure being built in Riverfront Park. And so back to the council to decide if you want to issue a letter of non-support or a letter of support for Spark's idea to build that platform.
There's regulations because of it being in Riverfront Park that you can't build certain things out there, and that's what their denial letter is about, you know? The state doesn't want you to build anything very close to that wall. They're very restrictive about the trees you put in or anything else you do. So I would go along with the municipal authority. It has to do with flood protection.
I would, the motion to send a letter from, it's not non-support.
Is it anything to do with, can you put something up even though it's not attached? Are they saying you can't put anything along that wall even if it's out so many feet and hot?
They said that you could out so many feet, but then their other reasoning was the underground lines that go through the whole park, was that if there was a structure there, the access to those would be impeded at that point then to be able to get into those underground lines. So there was two reasons.
Do they go through the whole length of that wall, those underground lines?
Yes.
There's like no place that it doesn't.
There's electricity all over that place, that's what part of it is, plus the flood.
I know Cory was really working on that for a long time, you know, and that's something that he was really like trying to do.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to, after I had seen that the Sunbury Municipal Authority had given, had that letter, I wanted to bring it before the council so that if, if the council wasn't going to support it either, that, you know, you wouldn't be continuing making this effort, so, but it's up to the council.
Yeah, because how do they have those, the outlook towers that they have there, that's what I'm calling them, but you know, those things you get up and you can see over the, what are those? Why are those there? Were they put there when the wall is attached to the wall?
No.
No, they're not attached to.
Oh, they're not, I mean, they're, they're at the wall, they're like at the wall.
But two things, in some places, the wall, the wall is longer underneath the ground than it is. And that's some of the main reasons, and up at the other end of town, is that the wall is, the brick back is a lot higher, and the wall, the brick back to the river.
Cory, those gazebos were put in years ago, and a lot of restrictions were changed since then. And that's why I said about it, that they're not attached to the wall, you can't touch that wall, the wall's.
Government property. Are you talking about the metal?
No, the gazebos.
No, she's talking about the metal stuff that goes up over, right?
Yeah, the ones.
They've been there, I bet you they've been there for seventy years.
No, no, these are brand new, they were only installed about ten years ago.
No, but the access up over that wall.
Right. The metal ones.
The metal ones are new, but they're, they're there to check. They were put in by the flood control, Jeff Lewis's department, but to understand the Corps of Engineers, that's so they can inspect the wall during a high water event. They're, they're only, they're there just for inspection, not technically regulated for us to be using, but of course we do use them. But the two gazebos were put in, of course, prior to a lot of the restrictions. And the sad part is, if you put that viewing wall against the wall, or the platform rather, you can see the river, okay? The further back you come, there's a fifteen-foot restriction, you come back fifteen foot, the elevation of that platform just raised about three foot. And then there was one spot, they wanted to put it in around Front Market, they were back off about thirty feet. Well, just imagine, if you want to look at that river, now, you'll be able to sit there and look across, see the mountain, you'll never see the water, but you put it up there about ten foot, and I'm just guessing on the elevation unless you shot it, but.
Was there another situation with what the regs are as far as a ramp, a handicap ramp? What the elevation is.
Yeah, that was figured out. That, I'm on the spark, and that was all figured out, and everything was measured out. And from talking to everybody we talked to, it wasn't really a problem. Now, now all of a sudden, there's all these problems.
This letter was from August of last year.
Right, but when we talked to the municipal authority to start the whole project, because we went and talked to them first before we, you know, and, yeah, they told us exactly what we had to do. Then when we started doing it, now all of a sudden, no, you can't do it. And that's what happened. So, I mean, that's not a problem, if it's no, it's no, you know, it's not a problem.
Could they do a motion? Okay, second.
Ice.
That's second.
That's second.
Ice.
Yes.
Carl Lovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese? Okay, and just in keeping with following up on topics that had been brought up at previous council meetings, last council meeting, Mr. Gittens brought up chickens in the family residential zone, we don't have no update on it at this time, we haven't had time to really explore it, so he's going to table that for now. It'll stay open as an item until the council decides one way or the other to pursue it or not. Shade trees and sidewalks, we did appoint the, I was saying to table it pending appointment of the shade tree commission, but I would suggest that we then, now that we have appointed the shade tree commission, that they evaluate this issue with the shade trees and the sidewalks and any impediments or tripping hazards that are as a result of the trees. And then they can come back to the council with a recommendation or an assessment of what the problem is. And then, there was someone at the last meeting that brought up about children playing on Court Street between Eleventh and Market, and that, the feeling that it might be unsafe for the children there. Mr. Welker did go and assess the situation, and he agreed to put up a, there is now a children at play sign at the entrance to the alleyway from South Eleventh Street. The alleyway with the parking on the right-hand side is so narrow that vehicles can't go very fast there. Speed was as much a concern as just warning people there are maybe children in the alley. And that's it, that's the end of the list.
All right. Our upcoming city council meeting is June twenty-fourth at the Sunbury Masonic Lodge on the second floor. July eighth is here in the council chambers. The next Heart and Heritage two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary committee meeting is June twenty-sixth at six P.M. in these chambers. The next New Year's Eve committee meeting is July twenty-fourth at six-thirty P.M. in these council chambers. Is there any audience comment at this time? Please stand and come to the podium.
Jerry Sheldon, my question is, I know fireworks are coming next month. Is, I don't know if this city would consider some type of ordinance regulating all the, all of us in this community to a timeline. They've already started, and then they go all the way into August. I have, fortunately, have a pet that is petrified to the point that I had to go get meds and put her on. And I'm not the only one, I'm just talking, I thought, I wonder if city council would ever think to consider putting a timeline on fireworks.
You mean, half a day or a length of year?
I mean, like.
A time of year, like only in these certain weeks. But do we prohibit, don't we prohibit shooting off fireworks within the city limits? By.
There's restrictions, I believe there's restrictions in the ordinance of property have to be so far away from properties. And the reason I'm saying that is I had a neighbor, a couple of years ago, that shot off fireworks and it came down on my, on two of my vehicles.
I live by the Americas, and they come into my swimming pool, and I have them, I can gather them up this year, or I can talk about it next year, but I thought, you know what? I was coming tonight, I thought I would at least bring it up.
And for right now, until something's figured out, we do have the noise ordinance for the city, so you could call and report it.
I just thought it'd be something that you might.
Yeah, it is in the code. So in the, in the ordinance here, offenses against public safety. Fireworks, use is prohibited, no person in the city shall cast, throw, light, or fire, any squib, rocket, cracker, torpedo, grenade, gun, revolver, pistol, cartridge, or other combustible firecrackers or fireworks of any kind.
Okay, well, that's not followed.
That's what? What did you say, not followed?
You said that's not followed.
So, hi, so we figure it out, I just, I'll go on here, I'll break it up, because then you'll be that.
Thank you. Any other audience comment?
This is Jay Dean Hallaback will be here.
Victoria Rose Trans, I have some concerns here. I received some information from different citizens throughout the city about some things being, some committees and things that are not going to be part of the city. So my question is, is Light Fest going to fall under the city of Sunbury? Or is that going to be its own entity?
So I have identified that there is a lack of regulation or standardization of how committees are formed and how they are charged with their responsibility. So it's not that committees will be eliminated as far as under the city. A lot of times when we, these committees are established and they're getting funds, grants, or donations, they're operating under the city's E.I.N. code, our tax code, so that, and when we don't have a specified, here's the committee, here is what you're responsible for, here is your accountability back to the city to make sure that everything is being conducted and accounted for, especially budget-wise, then I think that the city is open to potential problems where they might be held responsible or liable for obligation of funds that hadn't been budgeted for.
So does this occur after we met with you?
No. This, there's no change, the Light Fest will continue, it'll still be under the city, that's what I'm saying. I'm not eliminating any committees, I'm not, I'm not taking away any support from any committees. They will go, but what I, what I do need to do is now figure out which, which of these committees have already been established, and then, and then write up the charter for each committee so that it's clear the responsibilities.
I guess just to add on to, her and I have that, we had that discussion, March or April? About how the committees, there's no, there's no wording on any of, any of the plans.
Oh, and I, I agree with that, I'm just saying, the whole process.
It wasn't.
That this started, um, way back, like, a couple, uh, city council meetings ago, how I was approached about, and my wife, of our duty to the city. And you can sit there and have an attitude, because I've been nice. Twice, you were disrespectful to me. You can't run away tonight. But I would like to ask you about this. A coin. Honorable Kurt Karlovic.
For the city of Sunbury to represent the city in the mayor's position.
Oh, okay. And, and that's a timeline or an added date on the marketing?
One of the mayor's marketing too, yes, I'm giving him to new businesses and residents that do something special when I meet them.
Oh, okay. Is that, Joel, is that legal for his name to be on that coin?
I don't know everything about it, I, what are we talking about? Can I see the coin?
Okay, sure. This was sent to me by, by concerned citizens.
Do you have one?
I can send them out.
The president of the United States has one that are taxpayers.
You're not the president of the United States.
No, I know, um, there's different mayors across Pennsylvania and across the United States that also have a mayor's coin.
I just think there's more than usual as far as anything. That's all I'm saying. And I'm asking if it's legal for it to be on them.
It's legal to have anybody's name on anything.
And on the other side of the question.
But it depends what it's used for and how it's paid for, those are the questions, okay? I can put anyone, anyone on.
Sure.
Um, as can you, as can the mayor. The question becomes, how it's being used, is it legal? I don't know that it's not, I can't tell you it's not, I can't tell you, honestly, I mean, I've done research on that. I don't want to lie, you know what I mean?
Well, I just think there's better ways to market our city than a coin with our mayor's name on it. At five hundred and seven dollars. Thank you.
Julie, how is it being paid for? Just to ask.
The mayor's marketing fund.
You didn't know about that?
Well, no, I did not provide, I did not have prior knowledge, so they, I did see the coins. And then they came out of the marketing fund. I come from a military background, the challenge coins are a, a tradition where I, you know, in that culture. Um, I know it has spread out more into the civilian, uh, communities and organizations. It's a way to recognize people kind of on the spot. You know, hey, you did just one thing, I'd like to recognize you and give a handshake with the coin in your hand, and thank you for your, for your contribution to the city, or for this thing that you did. Um, and that's, I don't think that that's a bad idea, just to have a positive thing.
Everybody in council should get their own coins and walk around shaking hands.
No, it should be the city of Sunbury, and that's the way it is, it is marketed.
So, now I see that a list of people that you should give those coins to? Yes, no, maybe?
These are, you can do whatever you want, Cory.
I know I can do whatever I want, I'm asking you because you just said those coins are to give to somebody who's done something significant with his.
Kind of like what our city administrator is, it's more of on the spot, like, I went to the new coffee shop that opened on Market Street. Introduced, I, uh, we talked about the coffee shop, I shook his hand, I gave him a coin, welcome to Market Street. Met another resident that I saw was picking up trash along Forest Street.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is, is those the people that should give the coins?
It's more on the spot, it's not a planned thing. If you want to, the more of the better.
Well, it's obviously, we have to purchase them.
The more of the better action is, we have the city parent word, if you, if you know somebody that's, you want to actually plan, you can submit a list of.
Oh, I will absolutely do that, thank you.
Just for the record, the Union County gives, gives out. My son received one from, uh, from an officer. Thank you for that.
Julie, back to, to the Light Fest, because we are getting closer and closer to that time of the year. When are you going to take and put something together? Because in the past, uh, the city clerk's office, they handled getting the prisoners in, they handled the, getting the men from the street department to put them, who's going to put this together?
Right, I think we need to, I don't remember if the last, did we at the last council meeting actually establish a committee? We just talked about that afterward, I can't remember now. But we do need to establish a committee.
I have all the folders and all the information.
Yeah, and then, I think we, I, well, I thought we had discussed.
We never established one.
We never, we didn't?
No.
Um, because I proposed that we do establish a committee, and Victoria had volunteered to head that committee. And if the council would like to establish that committee, we can do so. And then as far as the administrative support from the city, former city clerk's office, um, it is difficult for a one-person office to provide the level of support that might have been provided in the past. I think that we, that's why we need to also define responsibilities when we establish a committee, and, um, and just make sure that those responsibilities and what support the city is going to provide, and what the responsibilities of the committee are to find, you know, to, to do and, and arrange and coordinate. So, um, you mentioned the, uh, getting the lights up, D P W. will still do that. Uh, I don't see any reason to change that.
Well, the city has to put through a question for the prisoners.
We can, we can still do that, yep.
Well, is there, since she's willing to do it, should we just put her in charge of it now, so she can get going?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we put Vicki in charge.
Is the city paying for any of this stuff? Is there a fund for that? Because I know S R I. in the past has given money to do that.
For Light Fest? You know better than I do where the.
It's good, there's a.
Given money for like.
The money is used.
Stuff like that. I don't know if there was any monies left over.
The money's running low, the money's running low in Mary Harbor.
Right, right.
Only a couple hundred dollars in there. They blocked that big tree a couple of years ago. And they also paid for the mills for prisoners and all that, and things like that. They're going to have to do some fundraising coordination.
Yeah, I think you'd be.
And a lot of people just put in donations.
Right, I know, whatever, you always give some money.
Like the Eagles always donate beer, or somebody donated.
So, so maybe we need to have, um, yeah, I think meeting just.
See, when the council decides, okay, we're going to approve and establish you as a committee chair, then I think we get together with the treasurer, find out where you stand monetarily, and, you know, the idea is, I, I think, my opinion is, and council, you know, decides. But I think when we establish a committee, that committee bears a lot of the responsibility for the work to get, to put the production on, with the event on.
Sure, yep.
Um, and again, with one person only in the front office, it's a little different than it used to be, so, um.
I just want to know what my, what, I just want to know what the boundaries are.
Yeah.
And using letterhead, hoover letters, things like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just want to know all of that stuff, so, you know.
That's what she's talking about.
That's what.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, that's fine, okay?
Well, just, one more thing here. I'm sorry, oh, you have a vote on the table.
Yeah, the motion is second.
Who did the motion?
That.
Me.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Breitner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes. Where do you stand on Santa Claus, do we have a Santa Claus now?
Well, that will be up to the committee now, to, to hire the Santa Claus, arrange how many Santa Clauses, how they're scheduled, all of that, that's all in the hands of the committee.
Now, since we're on committees, I'm on a roll here.
Okay.
After somebody's celebration, in the past, the street department helped us out.
Sure.
You won.
I'll be again.
And of course, Parks and Rec helped out and so forth, and the biggest asset was the Soapbox Derby. But, with the issue the other day with the printing, okay? Asking you, what guidelines am I going to be following here?
Right, so, again, learning the position and kind of evolving with the situations I'm confronted with. Uh, the reason I didn't approve, wanted support, printing thousand copies of a piece of paper to go to the elementary schools for the elementary kids to state, to take home for participating in Soapbox Derby. Based on a prior, um, prior support of the swim lessons. So, again, at that time, for the person that runs our swim lessons came to us and said, Jolene and I said, we need to make all these couple thousand things, they need to go, you know, eight hundred here and however many there. I said, we, we really just can't support that manpower-wise, supplies-wise, whatever. Let's come up with a better plan for advertising and getting the word out to students. So, the schools each have their own web-based platform for getting information out. So, we coordinated with the schools and say, to advertise for the swim la, swim lessons and have the swim lesson applications available. We did make some copies and give them, have them go to the administration offices at the schools, so they were available for students to pick up if they, if they wanted to. There was also an announcement through the school that the applications were available, the applications were pasted on our website that they could be downloaded. And then the front office was still the collection point where people would turn in their applications. They could walk in and also pick up a blank, uh, application. Um, and so that was the support, rather than using all those reams of paper, we decided to do more electronically. And we can also, um, I offered for, especially for the Soapbox Derby and Sunbury Celebration, let me know, we'll create the events on the city's Facebook page, we now have an official city Facebook page. We can create the events, we have five-hundred-and-twenty followers, um, and we can share those with some other organizations and pages that focus on Sunbury events and try to get the word out as broadly as we can. The reality is, is that, um, paper distribution is kind of falling away in more of a, an electronic and social media kind of way to get the word out. So, um, those are my thoughts.
Can I, can I jump in here?
Sure.
Jody Shalberg, I'm sorry, my other town on for Sunbury Celebration. And I came to you with, or when I sent it to you in June twenty, said, what you have back then is seventeen years ago, the city of Sunbury came to Parks and Rec and said, will you guys do the fireworks after the one downtown school? We're a group of what, five people? We said, yeah, we've had them now for seventeen years. We don't really solicit the businesses in the city of Sunbury because every other organization is hitting the city of Sunbury, we can only hit these guys so many, so many times. So, we go back to our same ones year after year, Papa Hawken gives us the water necklace. It's the same ones for seventeen years, we really haven't picked up anybody. So, seventeen years you photocopied the Soapbox Derby. Our Parks and Rec is always for the poor kids, the less fortunate, the ones that don't have internet access, all those things that you say. Our Soapbox Derby form had been out there, all you would have had to say to me is, Jody, we'll do them for two-hundred dollars. We have a budget, you're about the money, you could have said, hey, but I was under the gun in one week's time to get those soapbox derbies out to the kids. Do you jam it, have you seen it got out? My office did, and, uh, who else did? The Americas host company asked, but they were already, we haven't covered. Uh, Brian Applebaum did the other ones, so we got them out. And the idea is to get the kids, Parks and Rec is about the kids. So, unfortunately, you, I mean, I wish you would have said, this is the amount of money it's going to cost you.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I apologize that it was seen, but it was very short notice to get them out for us as well.
Well, we've always, at the same time every year, it's always gone down.
I'll, I'll, I'll chime in, I mean, I, I don't know all of the situation, but I kind of disagree from the sense of a productivity standpoint in the office, where if a committee of the city has a budgeted amount, and they're raising the money in their committee, taking away, I mean, printing a thousand papers would take quite some time, taking away all of this.
There wasn't a thousand, that was.
Whatever it was.
Right.
But I think, that's fine, I guess my thing is.
It was five-hundred, to be exact, to four different schools in the Chicago School District.
But you put them in a machine, you press a button, and when they're done, you take, put more paper.
If staples would have been there, I was so under the gun to get these out to the kids, I would have ran the staples.
Sure, that's what I was going to say.
But we didn't have staples, and I didn't know what to do, so that's my boss's, like, just go photocopy them. And had I logged in, he would have told me that to begin with, but I expected the city do it, as they had for sixteen years doing it. They're kids. Our, our community is about the children of this community, and I, that's why I'm on Parks and Rec. So, if it's not going to be for our kids in our community, then I might as well resign, and then you'll lose your volunteers on every other committee. There's so, there's so much conflict going on now, and I don't like that part of it.
Yeah.
I'm for the city and the kids.
Yeah, and I think every committee would be the same, I just think if a committee is given a task with a budget within that committee, the committee would handle the costs associated with it.
Right, I mean, had I known that, I should have made one charge me, but that wasn't brought up, it was just flat no. And then about the, uh, the swim lesson, that hasn't, that doesn't compare to what we were doing. Yeah, but we're, Parks and Rec, the sun, the fireworks is done for the city. All we're doing it is for everybody here. And then our whole event, mind you, is, everything that we put up there for the kids is free, every one of them.
I know it's great.
The whole thing. But the thing is, when you upset the volunteers by a simple photocopy, that's, if we all quit, then you won't have it. I mean, that's the sad part, but to be upset over, um, four-hundred-and-fifty copies at once. But I'm just saying, she didn't realize it, so maybe next year just bill us.
Yeah, well, let's, let's, let's talk about it more, you know, further in advance, maybe when after the event is over and the pressure is off, then, then let's, you and I sit down, let's talk about it and plan for next year.
Yeah, I mean, I'm good for that, that's why I say, we got it done, it's just I was frustrated when I saw the email and you wanted to reply, and I thought, I can't. Because I'm not one to jump and say that, things that was going through my mind, so I just.
And now the swimming lessons, that's going to take care of it, the swimming lessons.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
We got, you know, Jolene, we've got, I don't know how many swim lessons, things that worked out really well. But we, I'm wanting to see if we had it, you know, the decrease in participation, because the word got out, we have people coming.
Any other audience comment tonight?
Oh, yes. On the, uh, the parking, uh, ordinance, and one of the things I wanted to point out.
Please quiet down.
Sorry. Megan, by the way, I apologize, I didn't pronounce myself. Um, we mentioned permitted businesses, I don't know if it actually is a term, a current term being used in the city. Um, I think we have.
License.
We have a mercantile tax license, but there are businesses that might not fall under that, so I don't know that that's.
Everybody has to have even a minimum.
Not professional services, but not professional services.
So, we may want terminology for that, rather than permitted business.
Okay, Joel, help me find the proper terminology.
I will do that.
Um, the, uh, the other item was that, um, I think I heard a mention about having hours designated on the sign, like, for the business is ours, I think that's a fantastic idea. I think that could possibly maybe be spread to, like, career-length signs here, I mean, just because this lot is just completely off limits a, a most of the time.
Be nice to the fence.
Yeah. Exactly. And then the last item I was thinking about is actually in regard to those designated permit spots in all the parking lots. I don't know how populous, this popular this lot will be, but it's my understanding that the policy is for, um, permit, for the parking permits, that if there's designated sign, you can park there, but you can also park in, and you can actually park at any off-street parking meter, which basically, instead of having the sign, you had to park, if you just had parking meters and not have the signs for the specific designated parking, like, it makes, the fact that anybody can park at any parking meter actually solves both problems, except for the fact you have to supply those meters for those extra spots.
So, you're saying in the permit-only lots, that we should have meters because the permit allows a permitted person to park at any meter spot, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That, that doesn't solve the problem of a customer coming to the business, if that's what they're using it for?
I'm not saying that that's necessarily, I'm just saying that, well, what I'm, the problem I'm seeing with, with the designated permit spots is that they use up a percentage of the parking lots, and that, those spots can't be used for anything else. Someone is wanting to park there, like customers can't park there. So, that uses a percent of the lots, and then you're also using thirty percent of the lots for the businesses who want to buy spots. Then, but, you know, you have not very, you know, you're constantly reducing the amount that customers actually have to use.
Try to keep people off of Market Street, let the employees park in the parking lot, so they park in front of your establishment.
Right, and, I mean, I'm kind of bringing up a side issue, which is these designated parking spots, because like, for instance, in the back of the parking lot behind the Sunbury Market House, we have like five or six designated parking stalls, and most of the time, those are empty. Or Beth mentioning that we have a parking lot that has designated parking spots, and those are empty all the time. But it would be far more flexible to have meters there, and that people could just park there. If they have a meat, if they have the meat, the permit, then they can park there, and they know that, because that's the rules. But it doesn't prevent other people from parking there.
So, it would essentially be getting rid of permit parking almost altogether.
Well, no, it's just, it, the users would have the signs where they say, only, permit parking, only.
So, people with a permit.
Could park at.
Could park at any metered.
Off-street parking.
Off-street, but I think in the fee schedule, the annual, the annual, um, parking permit, that's the one that you, allows you to park at any metered spot, but the monthly one, parking lots only.
But is that worth the meters?
Yeah, if you buy your three-hundred-and-sixty-dollar parking permit.
No, no, I'm talking about the monthly one.
Mine's, no, only parking lots.
Only parking.
Yeah, but there could be, there could be a meter in that parking lot, you could still park there.
Okay, we got ticketed, I'm going back to when I worked at, for the, for the state, okay? That parking lot, we got twenty-five, like, you said twenty-five in one.
No, they were in four, I think, four.
Okay, but we couldn't park at any meter, because we got ticketed, because they were for, they were for, uh, parking, parking lots. Because they were for, they were for, uh, parking, parking lots only. But they had to be, they weren't allowed for.
You can use that permit for any lot, no matter if it's a meter or not.
Okay.
As long as you have a, you're parking permit.
Some of those lots may be the reason they want the permits because of the meter cost. I'm not sure that the cost of one meter itself is.
That's why we have the other one's at two dollars, so.
Yeah, and that could be, that could be a limiting factor, I understand that. That, you know, having, that maybe it was just a way of eliminating, um, maintenance on extra meters. I totally understand that. But at the same point, as far as that, is, still has an effect on the businesses whenever there's five or six spots that are just constantly waiting for someone to use them, but only someone that has one of those monthly permits or for an ongoing permit. And they can't be used by any way else. Now, somebody can say, well, those aren't, you know, nobody tickets on the weekend or whatever, but like, customers don't think about that when they're going to park. They just think, I'm not allowed to park here because I don't have a permit.
Maybe it's even looking at reallocating permit for meters that are maybe, I mean, there's probably meters within the city that are doing no business at all. Maybe it's reallocating those meters to, some of those can look into.
Honestly, you don't, you don't get very much in the meters. I don't like these things, you'll be good. Not anywhere between two hundred and fifty and tops, three hundred and forty dollars on the meters.
Oh, parking lot meters or Market Street meters?
Parking lot meters.
Okay.
And then street meters average anywhere between three thousand five hundred, five thousand, five hundred sometimes. It depends, you know, what month it is or, it's one of that.
So maybe there's an ultimate solution altogether for that. But just, um, and the other thing that I have, just on behalf of my, I have tenants who have those, have the monthly permits. Um, if we can think about a way to potentially make it easier to renew rather than having to physically come into the office. And maybe, there's always something that works, but having to physically come into the office monthly is a huge challenge.
Yeah, because.
I'm trying to renew the website.
It's color coordination. I tell you what, it's not easy for a meter to walk up and see an orange one or a green one or a yellow one. Cause some people walk in there and get a different number. If you do online, they're gonna just change numbers on a regular flat base weight. That's why we have different colors for the slides, so. So a meter man walks up, he knows what color is for a month and he knows where he's up.
I mean, they just.
Basically easier to patrol.
I hear you, but then we have people that work, you know, twelve hours a day, they can't get into the office, you know, and that's.
We tell you what, we sell a lot of them, so somebody can.
You know, if there was just some sort of automated payment, I mean, especially two of its only twenty-one months. Instead of automated payments and you would get more people consistently paying for those and that would improve revenue stream for the city. Instead of, yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Angel Saxton, uh, I have a comment. And I'm gonna like it. Uh, in reference to Sunbury Celebration and to Light Fest committees, we're all familiar with the terminology, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Well, Sunbury Celebration ain't broke. Okay, and once upon a time, Sunbury, or Sunbury Light Fest wasn't broke. Uh, probably most of you, well, many of you don't know it, but I shared the Light Fest committee for quite a few years. And during my tenure, uh, we purchased a good number of the city's declarations that you see today. We got the Santa Claus house during my tenure. I think she was here earlier, but she's not here now. Mel Purdy was also involved and she was instrumental in getting that Santa Claus house. That Santa Claus house was built for us free of charge. Okay? Uh, not necessarily indicating that that's any, has anything particularly to do with, with, with my comments today. But, uh, there was a time when, when Sunbury Light Fest was working quite well. Uh, then at some point in time, uh, it was decided that SRI was gonna take it over. They ran it for a little while, okay? And then, I don't know what happened there, I guess that kinda fell apart and it fell on two people's shoulders, which was basically Terry and Kathy. Okay, well, they're no longer around. But the point I'm trying to make is, I understand it's a different world today than it was twenty years ago when I was in charge of Light Fest. I understand the whole concept of accountability and structure and having things put in place to, uh, offset liability and that sort of thing. I get that. But my impression of all these things that we're talking about doing or not doing has more to do with control. That's just my opinion, if I'm wrong, somebody needs to convince me otherwise. I don't wanna stand here and bait it, it's just my comment. And the, the people, as, as Jody said, uh, you know, you, you're gonna lose your volunteers, I think, if you hold them back too much. Let them, let them run with it, it worked in the past. Let them alone and let them do the thing, it's, as we said, it's for the city. Light Fest, Sunbury Celebration, it enhances our community. And if the people are willing to step up and do it, don't bog them down with all kinds of rules and regulations and criteria. Thank you.
I just wanna take you back to, with, and with the Light Fest. Because my approach that I'd like to do with Light Fest is to involve the community with this, okay? And we started this last year, Christine and myself, playing Santa and Mrs. Claus. And what we did was we had the youth come in and play elves, okay? And what, well, how do you teach people to volunteer, you start them off. Okay, so that's the one thing I'd like to do. So hopefully I have the blessing of the, the city council, but I'd like to have the kids, because I'm not getting any younger. Look, we're gonna be skinnier by then. But, you know, we can have the kids come and they can run the garland and the bow to the, you know, the pole. But that's one thing I'd like to do, is involve this community, because this is their city. The citizens that live here is their city. That's one thing I'd like to do. So hopefully with Facebook and the daily, and with things like that to get the word out. But I want the city to be proud of their, you know, constituents, the citizens, and help us decorate our city.
Yeah, as I share the committee, I think that, that, that's, that's your, you know, prerogative and how you wanna organize it and who you wanna get involved, that's absolutely correct.
Any other audience?
Don't you talk about your.
Trying to get this one to two hours here. I just wanted to say, maybe you guys could, uh, give some consideration to either coming up with new regulation or enforcing our dumping ordinances for these community aid boxes throughout the community. I don't see any other city in the area that has couches, chairs, litter boxes, everything all over the outside of these community aid boxes. I mean, I know it's a good, a good cause and everything, but it doesn't.
Shut the fit in the box.
It does make the, the community look at.
That one on the hills, there's always stuff all around the outside.
And it sits out in the rain and tracks.
So the one with rescues, that's a mess.
Nobody's gonna want the stuff.
And then these people come through and they take through the stuff and then they throw it all over the place. And they take everything that's good.
Do we know, is there any kind of, so.
I know Philadelphia has ordinances.
Wait, I, 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 I'm unaware of. Like, well, fifty-four because of the amount, of the amount of them that was placed in the city. They were, they were doing it in selected areas now.
I mean, you probably wouldn't go after the community, you'd probably go after the property owner.
Well, you would think so, yes.
And then they would tell them, then they would.
Some of them were insured properties and stuff like that, and, you know, that's. Well, I, I.
Well, we have a no loitering sign downtown that works really good, too. Sign you work great.
The only thing is, that I see without really dwelling, digging, is limit the number of boxes in specific.
I think the dumping ordinance would work, I mean, it says right in the, in the ordinance.
Yeah, the question is, how do you identify who did the dumping?
No, you just, you just find the.
There are many canisters.
You just go after the, you go after the property owner. That's the only way you could do it. At least warn the property owner anyway. Change, or you're gonna get a fine.
Okay.
They go back and they have.
I guess one thing I think we should do, is find out the town, they're telling about putting their bonds.
The owners of the lot where they, where they.
Yeah, they get. And then they get to give.
But the company can get gift cards to give out to the needy.
Yeah, no, and, and then they give, they give money out to the community too. But I'm just saying, I, I'm not against what they're doing, it's just the dumping part of it. Especially for the rest.
Oh, yes, it's horrible.
Yeah, no, I understand, the county for the same, the county just.
Any other audience comment?
Just real quick, Lisa Saxton, real quick to piggyback on the community aid. We do get a percentage of, of the money donations only for the clothing and shoes that go into the box. We purchased signs and have them hanging next to the boxes. And it says on the boxes, small household items, please, you know, and bigger donations you, you take to the store. So it's being done, you're right. You can, you can put cameras up, which we currently don't have in that spot that I'm getting. But to task the city with reporting every time we have a dumping, the police don't have the time and the manpower to come and we can give you a license plate or, or whatever. I mean, we've had to take other directions when we find people putting residential garbage into our dumpsters out back. We've had people dumpster dive and find a piece of mail with somebody's name on it and send them a letter. So I mean, there's very limited stuff that the company can do, but it does benefit us. We have received grants from community aids for what, four years now?
Three.
Three years now in a row, five thousand dollars each. Because we host that box and then we can use it for our emergency equipment. We apply for grants and have to receive them. So it is a benefit to the organization, but we are limited as to how we can protect the space.
Any other audience comment? All right, this council meeting is now adjourned, thank you for coming up.